Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Halifax Board and Selectmen's Meeting for March 9th, 2021. We are going to start our meeting as we like to do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also want to mention that we are being filmed by Area 51.
Eight.
Uh, 58. Some people like to think it's Area 51. Area 58 Community Access Television, which is available to you on your local access channel 15 on Comcast and also on YouTube. And we're actually trying to broadcast in Zoom tonight. Having a little technical difficulty. We're going to start with the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to add or any comments? If you have not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll accept the majority. Is there any agenda?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous on the agenda. Selectment Minutes Regular Session for November 24th, 2020. Regular Session February 9th, 2021. Executive Session February 23rd, 2001. That would be just Mr. Andrews and Mr. Garen as I was not present that evening. So for the regular sessions of November 24th and February 9th, can I get a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
I'll move the executive session February 23rd, 2021. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous for those voting. Thank you. Mr. Garen, take it away.
I move to affirm an approval of the following warrant and commitment. Payroll warrant number 85 glasses of fogging off. Number 85, $379,038. Then the warrant number 86 for $146,640.04. School warrant number 87 for $371,884.44. The holding warrant number 88 for $134,052.81. And ambulance commitment for February...
I can second everything except for payroll warrant number 85, internal 2024, 2025, 2028, 2038, and vendor warrant that recues from internal 2057 and 2076.
With the exceptions of the ones just noted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll move payroll warrant 85, 2024, 2025, 2028, 2038. Warrant number 86, 2057, 2076. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous for those voting.
I move to affirm the following Selectment Bill. Kendra Keller damages a personal vehicle $1,163.13. Attendant's march may hold PC legal February $3,540.62. And Michael Gelman Esquire legal services on February $260.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything. I'm fine with those ones here.
Yeah, exactly. If you can't, why use a microphone?
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I move to affirm the following second bills. Maya Property and Casualty Doof Concorde rated $1,794. PP Law PC Legal January $2,683.95.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse. One recuse.
And I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Warrant number 90 for $1,349,305.79. Mobile home park fee $5,160.
Same for the interim, 2108 and 2126 of Fed warrant number 90. I'll move through this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those were which ones now?
2108, 2126.
2108, 2126. I'll move filings number 2108 and 2106.
Oh, is it 2126?
I'm sorry, 2126. 2126 and 2108. Thank you, Pam. May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous for those voting.
I move to approve the following Selectment Bill, dated March 9th, 2020. 2021. Audit, $16,500 Power Sullivan LLC. Town Hall Electricity, National Grid, $1,399.8. Lockout, zero one five one, $72.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Moving on, we still have a few minutes before our first appointment. Do you want to take yours or the bill?
COVID update, we haled to 15 cases in the last 14 days, which is as low as we've been now for several months. I believe we may be heading into green territory. I haven't been proven right yet, but we'll see in the next few days. Fire departments completing the second shots of vaccine in all of Texas in 75 years of age and older. Both Bridgewater through the Bridge Parks University and Kinston Collection are working on regional back sites, some of them are the ones that exist up over Foxborough. You should know within the next couple weeks where the number of hospitals that are going to exist. Council on Aging and Fire Department, the board of health will work on this housebound vaccination program for those residents who might not be able to get to those sites. We'll see whether the state's going to cooperate with that. State did increase the indoor gatherings restrictions so that... Or, sorry, relax, I guess is the best word. Relaxed indoor gathering numbers so that we could have starting a couple weeks from now, 22nd, up to 100 people in the indoor gathering wearing masks. We're still waiting for more clarification as to room capacity. This is regarding the still doing social distancing, which actually restricts the number of people who could be in a crowded environment. Features of firefighters, 27 program through the state for firefighters of vaccinated teachers, this is a statewide project, this isn't just per Halifax.
Legal, there's no report, need to tell me more?
On COVID and update. So on Desi's website today from the commissioner, they changed as a result from grades K to five for elementary schools, remote learning must be shifted to by Monday, April 5th. Middle school grades six to eight must be shifted to full in-person by Wednesday, April 28th. And for high school, they will announce the details and timing and plan in April. So that's the...
Were you worried or are the grade today any exceptions or...
So I'm... Our elementary school is slated to go back March 22nd in full. And we were told that all parents that wanted to stay full remote would still be allowed to stay at home remote. I'm assuming that's the same here. On Thursday night, civil aid is discussed in grades seven and eight of the high school and whether or not how to proceed with the year full term. We did a survey and we'll be talking about that on Thursday night. So it looks like at any rate we have to come up with a plan to bring the middle school back in full. There's a question over the six foot spacing for lunch because there's not enough spacing for lunch between the cafeteria. So we're talking about using the gym. If all the kids come back, then maybe I could use a couple other spaces as well. Is that a top point, be a pos associated, possibly, with adding a buy for more hardship? So that's what we're...
All right.
So in your town lead warrant, I've given me to your copy of draft number two, if you're working, if you're seeing on that, still obviously a bit of work in progress. I believe it has most of everything that should be in there. I think we look at this shot, we're seeing the selectmen's meeting forward, but it will get all the warrant because of the...
Charlie, can you move the Michael's idea?
Yes, sure.
Chief, you said...
Sure. It can... It will get... That will be in the warrant, it got submitted before or on March 1st. But I am going to check with Pam and Sandy to make sure we do have everything that came in. In case the state doesn't opt, but in terms of town meme, one of the things that came up during the MMA form this afternoon was that the state's still working on whether it's going to extend the waiver for basically if towns can waive their zoning bylaws for outdoor dining. They did that last fall. I mean, it's going to expire, I believe, in the next few months or even earlier than that. So the question that was asked was whether the state's going to extend it or whether they're going to require towns on an individual basis to rewrite the bylaws if they want to. If they haven't already done so, it's allowed for outdoor dining. People pointed out, of course, that town memes are already starting to happen this month, but on all the many others, the, you know, the Bay of the War set, we have to vote resulting here as well.
I'm going to pursue it. Chief shows saying that he cares, so I'm going to drop, restart my computer if you want.
Okay. What would you like me to do?
I guess start on your mic.
Okay.
So they can hear you.
Well, this mic is odd, so the mic on the computer will try, well, it will try that, but it will walk back from here.
I'll let you know when I can read.
So I guess the question is, is there interest by the board? We still got a little time to see whether we... If the state doesn't get something done, but the town does, to make those changes. I mean, we didn't do allow outdoor dining, but those restaurants that might be open, even this, as an example, this week, we're going to be in the 60s later this week. I'm not saying that they're not running, but that's an example where they might want to get back outside again and increase the capacity. So I don't know if the board has any interest in trying to, you know, having me try and knock on a few doors for the other communities, see what they put in for zoning, obviously want to talk to. Rob, I want to talk to fire chief and such to see what they would want in terms of the zoning changes.
I think we should explore it, but we're both benefit of the businesses. You're taking it on the chin, aren't you?
I would rather wait to hear that from the health inspector and building inspector as to what their thing is on capacity going outside again.
They may be hearing from other people also, so I'll be checking.
Absolutely, that's the way it's...
I'm... I think that idea, if we can figure out something to do to keep even on COVID goes away, if there's a lot of...
Yeah. Yeah. We would... Yeah.
Special town meme warrant. Special town meme warrant. Worth 645. Yep. It's 645, we have an appointment that we'll pick up now. Michael Geddes? Geddes? Did I pronounce it right, give me the time?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Would you come up?
Please get the mics right into your faces.
Get the mic over.
Yes.
And you're looking for an extension to a trailer permit?
That's correct.
And when was it originally issued?
January 17.
January 17, okay. And you had health help, right?
Yes.
Time on the burner for me.
Yes.
So do you have any questions? Has there been any complaints? Has there been any... Can you be guy or anything like that?
No.
I feel that you have to make the decision, you have to decide whether to house or build. Yeah, these are extraordinary times, just finding materials and so...
Yeah, we haven't even begun the process of finding out what we need to do for the construction of the house, so...
Yeah, the insurance companies tend to drag the fee and stuff. Next time you have a roof margin or...
Yeah. I like your mask, by the way, that's very nice.
It's a little aggressive, though, don't you think?
A little bit, but it's kind of got a smile to it, I like it.
My course, I'm going to be going.
Did they have to pay for anything to review another permit, like six months of the warranty?
No, did they just come back?
They just come back, yeah. I was just going to ask, should we do it?
Should we do it?
Yeah. Just the first time, they have to get...
Six months.
Okay. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to extend this trailer permit for six months. So I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Sorry, may you come in for that short period of time?
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
It all worked.
Okay, you send the bill on by April 12th, and you may then have the time when you have the schedule again to do an extension. I'll have it on my calendar too. Wonderful, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, our next appointment's at 7 o'clock, so we can do a little mail.
Let's see here. So special town meme warrant, recommending the board open the warrant for the special town meme on May 10th and recommend that they close the warrant on March 23rd.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Wage personnel by law, I'm not covering all the topics today, but there are two options for dealing with the discontinuities in the top grades, 12 and above. What we have right now, for instance, is that the police lieutenant is a grade 14, the police chief is a grade 12, as an example. So one possibility would be create new grades 16, 18, and 20, move the chiefs and administrator to those grades and set pay rates at appropriate amounts. This does work well with the concept of... It does not work well with the concept of grading positions based on the point system and placing the positions accordingly. It's an artificial method for realigning the positions to avoid situations such as the one I just described. On the other hand, you know, we'll have... It still maintains grades and steps and things like that and...
The grade would just correspond to what's actually happening.
Right. You're just not appointing this grading system. The other possibility is to simply move these positions to ungraded, where they each would one step, have a set salary, we could adjust the salary every year, just like they do for instance, veterans' age and other recreation director. They leave the positions in the bylaw, but move them out of the point grade system. The danger in that direction is that there'll be a temptation to move more of these positions to ungraded section and avoid being graded based on points. And basically you start undoing the whole idea of having a graded point system. But it does allow for the salaries of positions to be based, to be set at least more on the market than by the point scale. I don't need a decision from the board, I described a bit of this to the finance committee last night. So we do need one of those options, you know, for the future, either A, because the person holding a position doesn't have a contract, or the person holding a position is an interim with a pay rate of 10% less than the regular position.
Or one of the persons actually has a contract and doesn't even...
Well, if you have a contract, then you're out. You have... If you have the contract, the contract will supersede wage personnel.
I understand, but that's part of where we are in some of this, so it's a little confusing. I think I'd like to spend a little more time around, I know finance has taken it up and wage personnel, and I think maybe we'll put it off to a future meeting if that's...
Well, except that I'll take them, maybe some of my, something, maybe I have the money to include it as action.
Well, for the positions, you already have the money, I agree with that, I would not be out... For instance, I'm making this up, let's say the police chief right now is $130,000 for his contract. I wouldn't be recommending and submitting to the board an idea that whether it's ungraded or a graded, a specific grade, the salary be pegged at a amount higher than what's in the contract. You're already spending that amount of money. It simply would be shown on both ways, either under a contract or it's an ungraded or graded position.
Right.
To be separated to our... So people on contract.
Just after going through, trying to grade the positions last year, the point-based system is, for the higher levels, it's going to be so much higher. Like the lieutenant's position, when graded, that it depended upon how much work you expect that person to do, whether the chief is there.
Or the chief is with it.
Right. So I'm fine with either way, but I do agree with Charlie, if we have just those three positions, this ungraded, that might be easier at first because I don't see how we're going to get all the finance meeting work that needs to be done and all the budget based up between now and time to take. So if we have to have something in the three positions, I would think I'm pretty good to be able to go with that.
Yeah, and the reason I wanted to hold off was I wanted a little more discussion from finance and wage and the wage personnel guidelines so that we can put this on the same page as this. Whichever way you could go.
For the Purple Heart Propagation, we're going to get to that at 7, which is still a few minutes away. Post-nursing agreement, we, the town council revised it after reviewing it and is recommending, you know, the change is now been agreed to by all the parties, so I'm gathering signatures again for the revised agreement for atomic and its killer, for Rasio. So the board would have to vote again to approve the revised agreement and then the full board signs both copies.
We have to pay this.
So move...
I'll second the changes.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Aye.
For Upton Street, I talked to the board about this a couple weeks ago, we have a level that a buyer who's interested in purchasing the property, this has a barilic abandoned falling into pieces house to the point that our insurers also now said that they will not insure this building anytime after the expiration of current policy and that, given everything, we're not, if the board sells it, we're not going to recoup the taxes that are owed. But I think the board understood this when, since we're not trying to change the zoning to allow for new building model. So my recommendation to the board would be to start the RFP process, get sealed bids and sell the property. I would talk with the town council beforehand, make sure that any necessary stipulations are in there concerning liability issues, because we haven't run out, for instance, and done a practical survey at all, I can mind that.
Any other motions, Charlie?
Oh, yes, please.
I'll make the motion, start that.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Recycling payments, I'm failed to provide you with the information, so we'll bring that back on the 23rd. Town bank forum, Jackie Pino is interested in serving the council and recommending an appointment for term expiration in March 8, 2023. The grant awards have already been done, but it will be helpful to have another member on there next fall, this coming fall when we start the grant cycle again.
Can I get a motion? Can you get a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Recycling solid waste, I don't have any further information from the committee, so I'll pull the out of the 23rd and I'll remind them that basically we're running out of time. I don't know if we need a town meme article or if there's going to be some budget discussion about how much we're going to subsidize the recycling fund general revenue, then it's going to be worked, it should be worked out before we go through the process. Let's see. Walnut Street and Speed Signs, Chris LaDone had wrote asking that additional 30 miles per hour speed limit signs be constructed on Walnut Street at the intersections of Warren and Walnut and Summit and Walnut as motorists are passing the speeding and neighbors or residents living there are being tailgated when they're pulling in the driveways. He also would like to see more traffic in the course including speed traps. I didn't know if the board wants to send us the chat. Safety committee wanted to recommend something straight to the highway survey or take some other action.
I think it's appropriate to send it to the committee. These are the types of things that they deal with or should be dealing with. Can I get a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Complete Streets Program, Courtney Beckwith of Resilvire Netto wrote a draft document to be ready for the August area, the board selecting it next week, being March 20th. We have a draft prioritization plan, a finalized report and plan will be publishable the following week by March 26th and then submitted to the Complete Streets Program, a date equal first, I'll make sure that this is on the agenda for the 23rd. Town clerk, Ministry of Assistant, and the request for a stepping piece, we'll pass it over that to the 23rd for the town clerk. Area 58 and Public Access, both the Conservation Commission and Board Health would prefer not having a meeting to court it, the board had talked about this maybe a couple meetings ago when Richard Brulard was here from Area 58 about whether we have sufficient quota to take those meetings. Because the meetings are public, the board could simply request Area 58 to record the meetings without going back to the CAC and Board Health, but I'm recommending that the board have an intercourse or zoom discussion with the commission and our board members before taking that step. Neither the commission nor the board elaborated on their disinterest as to why they didn't want to.
In particular, the Board of Health, because everyone likes to vote, so I don't know how that...
Well, it's a public meeting, so...
No, I understand, but Joe or Mary could lock in here with a camera and simply...
No, no, I understand.
Like, yeah, I think you need to be working with them.
I think the Board of Health should be, and probably should have been the whole time that we've been doing this COVID. I think that because we got our, we've been having updates on Mondays and Thursdays, but maybe where we're not having those so much now, I think it would make sense that there's a goal that deals with COVID, it makes sense to have their meetings there.
What would the board like to do?
I think you should ask the representatives or the chairmans of local parties to come in and discuss it. I think that's appropriate.
So the 23rd... All right, good. The 23rd may be logistically difficult. CAC is going to start a meeting at 6 o'clock via Zoom because they're going to be hearing the... the, uh, the, uh, weed eradication proposal, uh, as far as the notice of intent, uh, that we're doing with the plots. And we're doing, they're doing it by Zoom because it gets sent out to six hundred, probably hundreds of the two plots, so we don't know how many people are going to have. The plan is to have that finished by six thirty. We're going to start being a little bit late at six forty-five so I can move from one Zoom to this Zoom and get it, and also assume that's, uh, um, by that point, maybe the chair for the tent. So let me, I'll contact all the chairs, see if we can get a time for the 23rd from the action. I'm going to make that happen. Uh, is it seven? It's seven. And what's the rest?
It is exactly seven, maybe a little bit earlier.
It's seven o'clock when we have an appointment from, uh, Dave Walsh, one of my favorite people. Hello, my name is Dave Walsh.
David, you need to be right up that microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Ben, Mr. Millies. My name is Dave Walsh. I am president and commander of veterans for War House for six five, uh, six two five eight Halifax. What we're doing here tonight is I'm, uh, hoping that you will, uh, okay, and proclaim the town of Halifax a Purple Heart community in honor of all the fallen heroes that have received a Purple Heart, some posthumously, obviously, uh, some have not. I've got one with us. Uh, this is Joshua Curtis, gentleman. Joshua?
Good evening.
Joshua was at eighteen Thompson Street, recently moved to Halifax and, uh, and was told that he moved here because he, uh, has a young family, it's a fine community to bring up a family. And it speaks well for our community. I wonder, if, if it's okay, can I give you a copy of this?
Sure, certainly.
So you can read on me, this is probably the easiest part of the whole, uh, this part here. In Halifax, we're spearheading, uh, this drive with five towns, Halifax, Hanson, Kingston, Pembroke, and Plington. Uh, most of these, uh, through the veterans agents and/or myself are being presented to the board of selectmen and/or who the convening authority is for that town. Asking them also if they would proclaim their community a Purple Heart community. There are some that already have received this status, I believe Rockland has. Uh, if you would just allow me, I want to just go through this very, so quickly and you can just follow along, if you would, please.
Yes, certainly.
Uh, the town of Halifax Mass, proclamation, Purple Heart community, whereas, uh, there's a lot of whereas's and sorry about that. Whereas, the people of Halifax, Massachusetts, have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community have selflessly served in the armed forces and have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice wounded by the hand of the enemy while engaged in combat. We have several in our posts that have received Purple Hearts, Joshua being one. We didn't bring a whole lot because of the, of this, of the, of the situation. Joshua was wounded, still carries shrapnel that'll, that'll stay with him the rest of his life. He's just one of many. Uh, and I'll go on the next whereas. The Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration that was created as a badge of military merit, made of purple cloth in the shape of a heart with the word merit sewed up upon it. On August seventh, seventeen eighty-two, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. Then sewn upon it in August, I, I repeat that, sorry. Then reestablished as a Purple Heart on February twenty-second, nineteen thirty-two by then General Douglas McArthur. Whereas, the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart. Whereas, oh, uh, excuse me, August seventh is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, lead a Halifax board of selectmen, thereby proclaim Halifax, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart community honoring service and sacrifice of those of our community, from our community, who were awarded the Purple Heart while serving in our nation's wars. And also be it proclaimed, the Halifax, Massachusetts will recognize August seventh annually as Purple Heart Day and urge our citizens and organizations to display the American flag as well as other expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients. If you feel this is a worthy endeavor, we would like you to proclaim this town as a Purple Heart community. To do so, we would ask that the chairman of the board of selectmen, I believe that would be Mr. Millias at this point, if you would sign the top line below, put your title and date it. And I think it would be very, in good standing if the other two selectmen would sign it also. To the right, you see that open space, we need our town seal affixed to that, please, gentlemen? And at, at that point, if you feel that that is appropriate, I have the calculation here that I'll give to you, Mr. Millias. If you feel that it's appropriate and you want to do this, would you sign it, affix the seal, and pass it on to Mr. Sealy? When he receives it, he could contact me, give it to me. I'll pass it on to, uh, Mr. Brian Willett, who's the state commander for the military order of the Purple Heart. He will pass it, he will endorse it and pass it on to Washington, D.C. They will endorse it and they will issue a formal proclamation through him. And he will come back and it'll be formally presented to the town, to you gentlemen, at a, some sort of ceremony, maybe at the meeting like this. Uh, and I think I gave you a copy, Mr. Millias, of the, what a sign would look like?
Yep.
We would provide them, if in fact you asked us to, you, if you wanted signs, uh, whatever, we would provide them, our posts would. We, we're doing this actually for a couple of other towns too, Halifax, because we, we have an umbrella, several towns that we, sorry?
Just one of them's a gentleman in the back, you can come in.
Okay.
Mr. Miller's a gentleman? No, no, she's just going to.
Am I okay now?
Yes, yes.
I, I.
No, no, we're good. We're just, sorry, make sure the road stays.
Oh, all right, I saw, thought you were pointing for me to do something, sorry about that.
Behind you.
So essentially, that, that is it. This was, uh, we thought we'd give you a respite tonight of ten minutes, present something very easy that technically you don't have to get into and do the figures and, but, uh, I think this is probably a worthwhile endeavor.
It's, it's hard not to be supportive of the meeting, but no problem. Do you want to make a motion or second?
I'm going to, we accept the, uh, proclaim Purple Heart community to the town of Halifax that's been invited to the paper hall.
A second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right. Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think that was.
Thank you very much.
I think he wants this one signed.
You want that one signed, or?
The one I gave you in the, uh, uh, folder would be the official one.
Okay.
The others are for you to keep as a, as a, a reference.
You, but it's okay for all of us to sign, is that correct? Or to do?
Uh, you need to sign the top line, being the chairman, sir.
Yes.
And then underneath, put your role, chairman, and date it. And then there's some space below that, and I think that would be a good gesture if both the other selectmen signed it also, to show that they're.
Support, yeah.
And then to fix the town seal. And I know that'll take a little later, I think, I think maybe, uh, Mr. Sherry would probably do that or Mr. Sealy could do that. And then you could contact me and I would pick it up and I would transport it on through the route and eventually we'd come back and I'll let you know when the formal presentation would be. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. We have about five minutes until our next appointment, so carry on.
Next mail was from a letter from the building commissioner to the owners of seventy Oak Street about ledge businesses being operated, this address, without the necessary permits. There's no action needed by the selectmen, just sort of, F Y O. Halifax Lurk versus Halifax, these are filings to tax help order on Solfield or Burger Street. Obviously, we can have a line to speak about property taxes in Solfield at that site. Again, this is per the board's information only, no actions needed. Reader Cannabis, town council's been updating the post community agreement and it's been sent to council for the reader. They're going back and forth at this point. If agreement can be reached on the ECA, the next step would be to have a form outreach meeting. So we haven't seen that yet, we're, we want to finish, uh, this finished project, we can get on that. Uh, budget grid and provisions, budget withdrew its application for site command and special permit approval. These agreements through the landowner, if matters would resolve, we would have to restart the process again in the planning board for site command and special permit approval. On town hall paving, Starbutter may be looking to go out to bid for crack ceiling, giving a restriking of the town hall parking lot, this might result in additional market for the annuals not needed. Our Comcast evaluation hearing, without her back, I can yell from Comcast about its availability for either April thirteen, three, or twenty-seven, thanks for the COVID in April. For our meetings, given that, I recommend that we simply pick a date and time to hold the hearing.
Want to take that now?
Yep. So, I mean, either night would be fine, started whether it's six forty-five or seven or something like that.
When, anyone have a preference?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, is that what you said?
Twenty-seven.
So I'm going to set it up for seven o'clock on the twenty-seventh. Uh, Two Lakes Liquor and Convenience, they expect to be opened by the end of April. Uh, they have life support ambulance affiliation agreement. Uh, this is a request, Jeff and Field Deaconess, this was submitted by fire chief. There are two copies, this is the same boarding as we've done in the previous agreement with the field. Uh, requires full board signature, so the board would agree, um, in town and then all three members could sign the agreement.
Can I get a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Some more. Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? All right. Unanimous. Thank you.
Haley received a letter from the proposed Harvard Bay Bike Ride. They've done this obviously for a number of years. I can't remember whether they actually did it last year. Yeah, that COVID, yeah. Um, so the group's looking to see what concerns the town might have on September eighteenth, which is the proposed date. I can refer them to Bob Valerie, but I think by September, whatever restrictions that will still be in place should be able to give a bike ride, given as I mentioned, you're allowing increased capacity indoors to a place that we haven't been for a number of months. I don't know what the board would like to do.
What would you thought? I think we, we, we located last time, there's no reason not to.
Yeah, I've been, we have no problems with the bike ride on the basis, really the only question, concern would be on COVID restrictions. Again, I can refer the group to Bob, or in the U.
Yeah, it's September, right?
Yeah.
So who knows where we're going to be September? Hopefully better.
Motion, conditional approval? I don't know the condition we drew with Bob Valerie's sound.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Unanimous.
Um, you have a proposed one, a law of an F D for Joseph Kushner, for agents and medical bills for an incident on duty on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. We need the board to grant approval for the leave and for, or submission of the claims and such.
So, yeah. Chief's okay with all of that. Move, can I get a second? Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? All right. Unanimous.
Ambulance abatements, our fire chiefs or collectors, this is eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars and nine cents for February twenty twenty-one.
Second. All those in favor? Uh, all right.
And I'm going to recommend that I hold off on the rest of the mail, we're almost at seven fifteen. And I think the next thing is going to take a couple of minutes to set up. Well, that put simply, the next item on my list here is going to take, kind of, a little conversation, so. Um, if the folks from, yeah, brass ops are here.
Brian Wall, I believe, is, who wrote that?
Was that your counterparty who had the charts?
Dave Mike, I'm a half song.
Okay, because there was somebody here with maps and such. Oh, maybe Concom. You want me to come up with Concom? So our, just so you know, our Zoom Lake is.
Yeah, it's not working.
Yeah.
They can hit you.
Okay.
And only you.
I'll do the play by play.
Um, Mr. Kim, and I thought, obviously, the presentation is.
They all have them.
Okay, do you guys have?
So you want to, uh, just kind of give us an overview of what we're doing here?
Yeah, thank you for taking the time, um, myself and my partner are, um, proposing to put an adult use dispensary at eight ninety-four Clemm Street, which is the blue building that has, um, Paul Reed owns and it houses, um, his alarm company, Bay State Alarm, and then it has a custom cabinet place on either end. And we would take the two middle units for adult use dispensary, that would be roughly eighteen, um, nine hundred to twelve hundred square feet of dispensary space with the rest used as a break room, um, vault, you know, storage for the material. We've, um, you know, it's properly zoned, um, you know, neighboring, the circuit street's on one side. On the other side is Morgan Power, and then across the street is Tunnel Land. And then diagonally is the Autobody Shop, and then Magical Daycare is actually, is six hundred and fifty-five um, feet away from us. We've engaged, um, Weebly Engineering, who did the original site plan, um, to do engineering for us, to just verify that before we came to the board. Um, a little background on us, why we think we're a good partner for the town is, myself, you know, I'm local to the area, grew up in Whitman, now I live in Rochfield. My partner grew up in Holloway, it's in Quincy. I currently am the founder of a company called Adaptive H R that does H R, payroll, employee benefits, and 401K solutions for cannabis companies nationwide. So we have clients here in Massachusetts, along with fifteen other states. My partner, a consultant that, um, is, you know, helping me with this project, currently has two adult use dispensaries, operational in Massachusetts. So we bring, um, a wealth of experience of, um, you know, security, proper protocols, working with towns being good neighbors. We've talked to both the fire chief and the police chief about the location to get their initial concerns. We talked to Chief Chavez about, um, things that my partner's done previously with institute, you know, situational training, just really being involved with the, you know, the town and making sure the location is, is a good, good fit, um, for the town. You know, as we said, we think the location is good because it's on one oh six. It's at the back end of the, the town, not in the center, by your, your major commercial buildings, you know, your Walmart and your shopping areas there. Um, you know, we've looked at the building in my presentation, I showed you some, some ideas of upgrades we would like to do to the building to make it more pleasant looking by, you know, maybe adding some stone to the front. Um, again, we want to, we're going to reach out this week to all the neighbors. I was on the assessors database, pulling that information today. We're going to send them a, a introduction to us and ask them to have, come to an open house or a meeting wherever would be good for the neighborhood to hear their, um, their, any of their concerns and just talk about things that we could do to the property to make it, you know, more pleasant to them and to the community. Could be simple things like the landscaping, you know, it's very, you know, I don't know who is supposed to promote it, but, um, we would, again, like to, um, make the site more of a, um, you know, more pleasant to everyone in, in the town and to the buddy neighbors, um, to do that. You know, one of the things that by partnering with my, my friend and my colleague is, you know, um, having him in the industry allows us access to product as the state continues to permit dispensaries faster than they permit cultivation. Um, on Thursday's meeting, the state will approve ten additional adult use dispensaries. That'll bring up, make the state have a hundred and fifteen operational dispensaries. Um, and, but they're not permitting any cultivation, so having those relationships will ensure that we can, you know, be a good, um, revenue source for the town that, you know, we can make sure that three percent of the town would get as part of the post community agreement, you know, would be of value to them. And just some quick numbers on the, the total licenses. Right now, there's three hundred and seventy-six recreational licenses in the queue for the, for the state, of which a hundred and ninety-nine are kind of in the early stages. As I said, sixteen are waiting to get approval to open and, um, fifty-five are just at the beginning stages. So there's, um, you know, there's a lot of things in the works for the state just around dispensaries. And in total, there's over a thousand licenses between all license types. So again, we're here to, to present ourselves as a good candidate for the town, a good partner. Um, having been near, done this before, you know, we think that expertise that Brendan McKee, who's on the line, brings to this, um, to this partnership with the town, you know, really helps us, you know, get to market quickly, um, with, with the state because we know what they're looking for. Um, you know, we're trying to be proactive with the different boards, yourselves, the police chief, the fire chief. Really understand their needs early on to be proactive in, in our communication. And as I said, we'll be reaching out to the community, you know, all the neighborhoods. I think there's about twenty names I pulled, addresses.
You, you said we've done some measurements, so we comply with all of bylaws in terms of ratings?
We do.
Like potential conflicts? And I saw the circumference of that map, but I didn't locate a lot properly enough, so I wasn't sure.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can give you the measurements that Weebly did that shows us six hundred and fifty-five feet. If you would like those to you and your fellow.
Uh, what about residential? Is there any conflict with any residential portions of the bylaw?
Um, you didn't vote to have residential zoning in.
Do you mind if I?
Yeah, I just didn't know if you want me to leave him here if I'm allowed to approach you.
You just think like your business.
Yeah. And we just got that back today, or yesterday, I think, late last night from that. So that's why it's not included in the, in the presentation. So your bylaws says eight A, we would not think we would, we would work with yourselves. We would, you know, obviously, you don't want to hear from the neighborhood. Uh, most locations across the state seem to open at about 10:00 AM and then they would run till, um, you know, 8:00 PM to your close. I mean, we would, you know, we'd be open till the Saturday time and then, you know, close time, we would look to be open till eight o'clock.
The other businesses you mentioned, just, just curiosity, it just doesn't look like anybody's actually operating in there. Is anybody currently acting?
Yeah, operating in that? I know that, uh.
Paul. Yeah, Paul's there. So Paul goes first thing in the morning, like 5:00 AM, then back his truck out to, to go do his alarm business. And then, uh. And then the guy in the very end is a cabinet maker.
Oh, that's what it is.
And just as you typically drive by, there was seldom seen much activity there. Probably apartments out the back and people actually not.
The cabinet guy, well, Chris Winowitz, 129 Circuit Street. The cabinet guy, I didn't see him three months there.
Yeah, I was going to say.
He was there all the time, he's black man. It's like he moved out and hasn't been there forever.
Yeah, Paul said he installed during the day and then built at night. So he gets there probably eight or nine when we'd be closing. You know, Paul's never there and there's twenty-four parking spots.
Like I said, I haven't seen the guy get a night of day anymore.
Well, that's why I'm asking, I'm just out of curiosity, because every time I drive by, I don't see any activity. So I was curious if anyone was actually operating. Again, just for curiosity.
Uh, just on the chat says, uh, Brendan McKee, Lord Board, and all that service. Thank you for having Brian on, so Brian wants to be trying to ask him to ask Charlie to question in the commercial.
I'm sorry, I got some of that.
He, I believe he's your business partner. Yeah, so he can hear you, but that's it. So we're just saying, if anyone has a question that you want to hear from Brendan, like, if you ask him, he then can pause.
Yes. I, I don't know that I got a lot of specific questions, but. Well, it sounds like you're doing the right thing by contacting the neighbors and letting them know what's happening because that's really terrible.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, we want to work with them. Uh, you know, that's why we wanted to first come to you guys and get that you, you're okay with the site. And, you know, we, we have it in the agreement with, with Paul Reed, so we're, you know, we're paying rent. And, uh, and, and then if you're okay, we've talked to Charlie, we've kind of, we've actually submitted one draft on the HCA. Then we're, our council's got the revised copy. Uh, we're hoping that, you know, that they can get together this week. Iron out the HCA, it seemed very, um, standard for what we've seen.
We have a template that, on the course of time has evolved.
Yeah.
There's something to work from.
And then, um, and then, you know, because, you know, we're not, you know, you're not allowed putting in the mailboxes. I pulled all the assessors records and I was, you know, I'm going to mail out, um, letters with my contact information to the neighbors, like, hey, I'm all the same, happy to talk to you after this and do anything. And then, you know, we want to meet with people, we want to hear their concerns, um, to hear those before it goes to special, the special permit side, so we can really get down behind the project.
Yeah, but a lot of the nuts and bolts are going to happen at the special permit process.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, if you would have any key question, someone else would like to ask? Yes, please, but that's the best shot we have here. Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, normally what we would be doing is they're working on the HCA, their council are working with the town house on the HCA. Once we get something worked out on that, we would have outreach public forum, as we've done before, for other applications that have come in. But after that, we bring the modifications of the HCA and then the board can make a decision, yes or no, about whether they want to sign the HCA.
And then if we do, then there's still the special permit process.
And there's also a provisional licenses process.
You're not considering the HCA tonight, that's a public hearing and then, oh, okay.
Now, this is just a new degree.
Okay.
But at least that's what I think.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, I just, yeah.
I've learned more about cannabis in the last few weeks now, especially with the coming of the border.
Yeah, I mean, the industry is, um, you know, it's very active here. I mean, it's active nationwide. I mean, Virginia, which, you know, was obviously a very red state, just last Sunday passed legislation. So they're going to legalize adult use marijuana on January 1st of 2024. And then obviously, a member of New Jersey voted on it. Cuomo, if he doesn't get ousted, but he wants legislation on his desk for his budget here in April. And then, so by the end of 2021, I think you'll be able to drive from Vermont to Pennsylvania and every state in between will have adult use legalized.
What's the timeline that you're, you're looking for for, for now? So when do you think you would be able to open?
So obviously, a lot.
If, if everything's on.
Everything falls in. Yeah, I mean, it really depends on the special permit. You think we can get through state approval in, um, six months? Because we, you know, because my partner, you know, friend is, who's helping with this, he's done it before. So, you know, it's kind of like, you know, all the things that everyone makes in that process, he's been through. So we think we can get through permitting, you know, in about six months because the states, you know, they've done it a hundred, you know, sixteen times. So it's, it's more mechanical for them to prove licensing now. Um, so special permit, you know, let's say we were able to get the HCA done by, you know, the next couple of weeks, then we would, we'll be all, obviously working with the neighborhood. But then, you know, I think it's, partner Charlie took three weeks to do the outreach meeting, so that would put us mid-April, right? So then by the end of April, we could get the sign, HCA from you, we would stop the special permit process as quick as we can, is a lot about town. And then, you know, in a perfect world, it would be open by the end of the year.
First tent poles have need to, when we're giving this all over the state.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we're, we're willing to do, you know, construction and stuff as we're going through the process as long as, you know, we will obviously reach out to the neighborhood and we think in the HCA sign, um, you know, in order to the total consorting, we've had given the town their three percent revenue. Because where I live, you know, as I said, in Marshfield, we've had an HCA sign for almost two years now. They haven't even sat at construction. It's just sitting there and they're kind of joking that we're buying, building a new police station. Everyone thought we're going to use some of that three percent to, um, to do it. And they haven't even sat at construction, um, on that. So that'd be our goal, is to work with the town and the neighborhood, um, and open by the end of the year.
Did, did you have revenue projections for the business as well or?
I didn't, we think it's about a $6 million. You know, we think it'll do about eighty cars a day potentially. You know, somewhere between fifteen and eighty cars a day. So, you know, the average ticket is about $75 basket size. You know, and a lot of that stuff, if you go on the state, CCC's website, you know, the good thing about Massachusetts is it's all public data. So you can go on and literally see, you can't see it by store, but you can see how much sale they did. So like in January, I think they did about, um, eighty-seven million dollars in, uh, in, in sales from the state. So I think it'll be a billion dollar year issue in revenue.
Uh, Chris Winowitz, 129 Circuit Street. Uh, as you go through this process, I just wanted you guys to be, look into the location and go look at other pot shops. I went down the last week or two and counted cars. You go cripple 106, the amount of cars that come in and out, entering. And there's, uh, in the bylaw, you can't be within five hundred feet with children congregate. Just on Wall Street, all summer, spring, fall, by the car roads, parents bring their kids and drop them off at the pond there. There'll be fifteen, twenty cars lined up there for people and kids. So that's another thing, well within five hundred feet. And, uh, I've seen many other towns, not a lot of these are signing HCA because it's not an established character of the neighborhood. I believe there's more frontage on our residential street than there is on 106. And like I said, the traffic, the amount of traffic that might be out there, we've already seen problems in the past in our street where they'll bypass our horseshoe and all go racing up our street. So that's something else to consider. I don't think that's the right location in Halifax because 106 is so narrow there. Uh, I believe it's an old colony traffic that does all the traffic studies. They've even highlighted that, that's a problem area on 106, such the high traffic speed. It's, I think, one of the highest speed living in town right along there, where everyone travels. So even if you have a detail car out there, it's going to be a nightmare.
Well, certainly these are the kinds of things that we would expect to happen or come up at, at the hearing, at the open forum, not the hearing, the forum.
Uh, yeah, I know that they'll be coming up, but I just wanted you guys to think about that, just go through the process.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anything, anybody else? I, I think for now, unless Charlie has any questions, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, so we're okay to continue moving with the process and, and I'll continue to work on the HCA with Charlie. Just, uh, okay?
Um, there's still a lot of steps to go.
Yeah.
That's the first one.
Yeah.
So at least get to the point where we're deciding on the end then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, boy.
Okay, uh, moving on. So back last year for fiscal twenty, the board allowed a number of employees to carry over from vacation leave who normally is allowed, when they were union members or non-union or your personnel. Did we finish on this? I'm sorry, Troy. Did we vote, uh, Joseph Kushner? Yes. Obviously, we, we ended up, it was the pandemic started about a year ago. People had vacation, they were planning that spring and they couldn't take it for various reasons. A, we were super busy, but B, suddenly they couldn't go anymore. And so the board said, okay, fine, we'll do some carryovers. The police chief has asked that a number of employees in the police department be allowed to carry over again from fiscal twenty-one to fiscal twenty-two. A number of their employees, however. The police department, um, for the most part, there are two employees who only can carry over forty hours. The uniform officers, for the most part, can carry over eighty hours or eighty-five, depending whether they're sergeants or full officers. Um, so we're left, but we're left with a situation where, as I detailed in my notes, um, there's a couple of people there that if they took a week between now and then in June, maybe another person, it's a little less than two weeks. However, one person has about four weeks of vacation that they would lose if they don't take any between now and then. And another person's about, uh, four and a half weeks. However, if the board's going to do this, I would expect that all employees from the other departments, whether union or non-union, are going to be requesting the same thing. And I do sympathize with the situation in that, given all the COVID restrictions, you know, people could go on vacation during this past year, but they may not have been able to go anyplace once they were there. And then coming back, similarly, they had to get tested again before coming back or get tested once they were back and had to wait out the testing period. The problem, of course, is especially given the amounts there, that if the, the board may not want to say yes to the whole thing, they might say, well, if you're allowed forty, we'll let go up to eighty. But then you're dealing with a couple of people who are at eighty and you allow additionally vacation hours. And mind you, speaking as a person with a lot of vacation that hasn't been used, you know, I sympathize and, you know, and would probably do not at the door if you're going to start doing this. But I also think that all, you know, we've had a lot of time to compare, um, in that where we were a year ago was going to be a different and strange place. Where we are now is for, it's going to continue for several more months, probably. So I don't know what the board wants to do. I didn't put people's names on there, but then what if this, but I'm legal, just being honest.
I, I see so many pitfalls with this. Um, I see a lot of people suddenly want a vacation in around the same time. And I understand the pitfalls to not go on vacation if you can't go away. I, I get that, it's having months had more vacation time than I could do. And that sounds wrong, but, um, but then there's the possibility of a lot of people gone at the same time and now you're trying to fill shifts and hang around time and I, 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 I don't know. I, I, I'm not, again, I, I sympathize and I understand the, uh, the request, but I'm not too sure that's the direction it's best to go in.
I have a range of experience that I have lived the, uh, some of the hassle with management. And we have big chief asking for a security is over. He, he should be accountable for, like, how to make sure that people don't take over vacation at the same time. You know, and it's all, it's not the same way with the fire department. It, it don't, you sometimes accept it, wouldn't be time on the job or who, who last first or whatever. But in the beginning time, because for us to say you can carry over anytime and you can take any time at once, I, I just have a problem with that.
Well, I, I understand it's a management, uh, issue, but I, I, I think Charlie's point's well taken. I mean, at some point, it's eighty hours and a little forty, uh, somebody's already got, I, I have no word. I, 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 I don't know.
So I guess I would have a question is how many hours from these people carry from last year to this year for this group? And how many do they petitioning being this year?
Well, for the police department, they get their vacation on July 1st. Um, so that they're not, while they're accruing, they can't use it during this, the year or any right now. They'll get another deposit of vacation leave on July 1st, 2021. Um, they started, let's see, let me just wait. They, we had carryovers. One person was eighty, one person was eighty-six, fifty-nine, sorry, sorry, fifty-nine, seventeen, fifty-one. The people who are, we're talking about, let's see, eighty. The people who were, were talking about, let's see, 80, 86.58, 51 hours carried over, which is less than the 80 that is allowed as it is. 34, again, 80, again. So we only had, we only had one person, two people, sorry, two people who carried over more than what was normally allowed. That was individual one and individual two. They, they carry, both of them were allowed normally to carry over 40 and the board allowed one to carry over 80 and the other to carry over 86.58. Right? What do you think? The other thing, the other thing is neither of those individuals, obviously, has taken much vacation. One one's taken a week and a half this year and the other one's taken just barely a week.
Just my inclination on this is to ask them to try to use as much time as possible this year. Because carryover, every time we allow people to carry over, it costs town more money following the year. With this, shifts is going to go in over time.
Yeah, if you take some individual one and two, these are individuals whose shifts would not be filled. So the board's rare.
So these people would accrue again July 1st, correct?
Correct. They would get whatever they're supposed to be getting, you know, whether it's three weeks, four weeks, five weeks vacation on July 1st. That would go into their account.
And would they be allowed to carry now because of the leave?
The, um, probably then the chief and the administrative assistant, everybody's allowed to carry over 80 or 85, depending on whether it's patrol or sergeant. And the chief and the administrative assistant are allowed to take, carry over 40.
So the people who are currently carrying 80 could carry those in?
Yes. And that's why there's only, there's several, you know, there are several people who have unused vacation leave, but there's only three, well, there are only five that are over the amounts that still have remaining more vacation to use than they can carry over. Everybody else could carry, if they took no vacation between now and 30, they would carry over the amount if they had.
So it's really, how many people?
Five. For the, for the department, I mean, I have no idea what the numbers look like for highway or fire lines and the others.
And there's no possibility of using it down to 80 between now and July?
Well, I would, you know, as I mentioned, for individuals four and five, if they each took a week off, they fall below the 80. Individual three, if they took two weeks off between, you know, during the next four months, maybe below 80. It's individuals one and two, one, as I mentioned, if they don't take any time off, they're losing, one would lose four and a half weeks, the other would lose about four weeks. Now, they might be able to take some time off between now, let's say, let's say each of them took two, two weeks of vacation off. One of them would be down to two and a half weeks if they would lose, the other person would be down to about two weeks to lose.
So two and a half weeks above the two weeks they can carry over.
Right. Well, again, these individuals, sorry, these individuals only can carry over, these two that are tied, number one and number two, can only carry over four.
Okay. Chief, Charles is on, I don't know if he wants, he said he would like to speak. He said he can't hear me on this, but we know that is the case. Do you want to, do you want me to turn on the volume here or?
Sure, um, I'll try and turn my volume on. Let's see, chief, if you can hear me, I've upped my mic, I believe, or at least the sound.
Charlie, you're not getting fine because you can't hear anyone else on the board. So I, I, you know, I heard your, your explanation and you were on point. The reason why I presented this question, we just think the board, the way of the situation, more than likely, you know, the chief, the leader of your circle, I don't know if you remember him, but I'm assuming it's, you know, true. It will probably be taking more likely, you know, one or two vacation weeks for children, period. So I think they'll be fine. It's just kind of one or two, obviously, you know, that is, that we're all, our way of carry over 40, that might be difficult. We might, so, we just don't know, it'll probably, you know, do it in a pain and put in the question, we can carry over 80 for one of the year, for two offs and five, and everything like that.
So chief, if, if those two individuals were allowed to take 80 rather than 40, if you didn't, if nothing else happened, those individuals, one of whom would lose three and a half weeks if they took no vacation between now and June 30, the other would lose about three weeks if they took no vacation between now and June 30.
Right, so if you're going to require this kind of leave, we're required to be able to carry over 80 to kind of minimize the year.
I don't think I have a problem with that. 80? I don't have a problem with the 80. Chief, I'm getting reactions from the selectmen that are positive. So if the board would make a motion to allow the, all the employees of the police department, the, those, those who are allowed right now to take, to carry over 40, to take 80.
For this year.
And then the board can talk with me about what they want to do with the other departments.
Make a motion to allow.
Troy, can you hear a second?
I'm thinking about it. I think it's a headache because you're making...
Yeah.
No, no, they're, they're working out a motion. They're working out a motion.
We have it moved and seconded to allow those carrying over 40, allowed to carry over 40, to be increased to 80. I, I, I think for, at least for this year, is that, is that, will we all amorde that?
Yeah, for this year.
For this year? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So chief, what the board did do is for those individuals who, under the contract or under the wage and personnel bylaw, allowed to carry over 40 under normal circumstances, the board will allow them to carry over 80. So the year we're in now, they'll be able to carry over 80 instead of 40 into fiscal 22. Chief?
He's muted.
Okay. Well, he heard me, so, okay. So chief, what the board, what the board voted was that for the individuals, whether it's because of the contract or wage and personnel, that those individuals who are allowed only normally to take, to carry over 40 hours are now allowed to carry over 80, but only this particular time. This is not a permanent type of situation.
That's fine, yes, that works.
Okay, well, sure.
I, I think I misunderstood in the beginning. I thought we were talking about many more weeks than that.
But the board would allow the quiet, uh, some people now, you know, only what is available to do.
No, what will happen is since the board's already done that, I'll inform the town treasurer collector and the town accountant so that at the end of June, when they set up the leave, you know, calculating leave, carryover and things like that, it will already be in place.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up?
Okay. Solar electricity aggregation for low-income residents. My colleague from New Salem had written to a number of other communities that use Colonial Power as their broker for the aggregation programs. I guess Colonial's trying to set up a special rate for solar electricity aggregation for low-income residents using subsidies from the state. She did have some concerns about how the subsidy from the state's being divided among the power company, the broker, which is Colonial Power, and the residents. Colonial Power, they contacted me a few weeks ago, I did not follow up. If they do contact me again, I do plan on talking with the state energy department and the MMA about the program before forwarding any information to the selectmen. Because anything like this would need the approval of the selectmen, no actions needed, just an FYI only. We've already talked about racks and pistols, their applications were withdrawn for the retail at the Blue Building on Plymouth Street. I did issue an RFP for the town building campus per request of the building and facility needs committee. An RFP's been issued for the possible purchase of parcels between Clark, Plymouth and South Streets to continue, combine the parcels with the town already owns in order to create a larger campus for new buildings. We'll see what that response is. Obviously, Grass Taps met with you tonight. Going back to the building and facility needs committee, the committee's asking that you appoint Bert Gainer to the committee.
Make the motion to appoint Bert Gainer to the committee.
Moved and seconded to appoint Bert Gainer to the building committee, building and facilities needs committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
The Congregational Church would like to use the town hall property for its Easter service on April 4th in a similar fashion to when they have health services here in early fall. There were no problems then. I don't see any reason not to grant them permission again.
They really want to use the town hall too?
They use it, not the building, but they've been outside, which would be an outdoor service.
Parking lot, right?
Uh, they may use the grass. They, for instance, I know several times they were behind the building over, if you looked out the window of the town clerk's office, you would have seen them sitting outside.
Yeah, I, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. A sidebar awareness grant, the town has awarded another grant in this area. This is not a money grant, but one that does provide training for employees and IT personnel. And congratulations to Caesar Clara for the success in obtaining the grant. Town Regazebo, you had received a note from Jonathan Sealy, who would like to restart this project for a handicap accessible structure that would be 100% privately funded. Is there interest by the board in reestablishing the program? And do you want Jonathan to meet with the board sometime later this spring?
I would think so. I, I think that in the past, the board has expressed some interest in it when there was another proposal. And certainly Jonathan and the House Committee did an outstanding job raising money and executing, which is just as important. So certainly, I think it would be appropriate to listen to their proposal. If anybody has any comments?
He's been very successful and tenacious in doing things down. I think it would be a good idea.
Okay, yeah, no, I'll get something said out.
Yeah, correct.
I have no other public business for the board. I do know, need to go on executive session to discuss the various contracts, highway, mixed units, sergeants, patrol officers in fire.
Do you have school on the list?
I can put school on the list. In that discussion of these contracts would be, in public session, be detrimental to the town's negotiating position. And I don't expect the board to go back in a public session or have any further announcements after concluding its executive session.
So?
Yeah.
It has been moved and seconded to go into executive sessions for the reasons enumerated by Mr. Sealy. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Millius?
Yes.
Unanimous. And again, we will not be conducting any further business when we come out. So I guess this is goodbye and good night. Thank you very much.